Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Okay, good. Well, hello, Mr. Osborne.
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I'm doing good.
My text that I sent you?
I did not get your text.
You should, you should, it's, it's at the meeting, so when you get bored, you can check it. If you didn't get it, let me know and I'll resend it.
Okay. This is just too much excitement waiting.
I know, I know.
It is on.
Hi Doug, I hear you.
I'm here. We, we need a third council member.
Yes.
I see there's only two on here so far.
No, you've still got four minutes of fun.
That's, that's true.
I just turned your camera on.
You look good, Doug.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go.
So it's a real Doug.
Yes.
Well, no, if the camera's on, there's a little square that will show you. No, your camera is off now, but your microphone is on.
Maria, if you're on as the City of Plymouth or whoever that might be, real quickly send a text or an email to Peter, Mary Ann, and to Val. And I know Val said she got emailed today. And I haven't heard from Peter and I did get, I did send an email to Mary Ann, but I hadn't heard back.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm not the City of Plymouth. My name is actually up here.
Okay, if you'll do that, we don't see it on.
Rex, they may think it's 6:30.
Well, notice was pretty clear.
I was very, well, I didn't know six talked till about three hours ago.
I think Annie is our city attorney.
No.
Annie?
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm the city manager. Keith is the mayor.
Hi Annie, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
And Doug is our council member and we're calling the others to remind them it's at 6 and not 6:30.
Gotcha.
I got a text back from Mary Ann. She said that she's Zooming Lincoln right now.
Good.
We'll have our forum. I sent the link to everybody again, Keith.
Okay.
There she is.
Hey.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Annie, this is Mary Ann Ackerman. She's one of our council members.
Hi, Mary Ann. Nice to meet you. I'm covering for Frank tonight while he enjoys time with his new baby.
Yes, that is awesome. Nice to meet you. That's very good news and I apologize for being late. And I've got to figure out how to turn down my TV. I'll be right back.
I'm going to give her a second before we get started. You good, Mary Ann?
I am. I apologize, Keith. Good to see you though.
Good to see you. Okay. Since we have a quorum, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the City of Plymouth City Council Special Meeting for Wednesday, November 10th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to order. And this is a meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill AB 361. The meeting will be held via telephonically or electronically only, meaning Zoom. In-person participation by the public at a special meeting is not permitted. Remote electronic public participation is available in the following ways. City of Plymouth, yeah, the City of Plymouth City Council Zoom meeting address is listed and with the dial-in and the meeting ID and the passcode. Okay, I guess we need a roll call.
Councilmember Sim.
Present.
Councilmember Kleinfelter. Isn't in yet. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amoruso. Isn't online yet. Mayor White.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Is it, does someone have a flag in their house? I kind of like to do a flag salute to a, to a flag. Okay, I guess not. Go ahead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one name stand, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have no invocation, but I would like to just say a happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps and let's all have a great Veterans Day tomorrow. With that being said, do we have approval for the special meeting agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the special meeting for tonight.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Sim.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter. Still not on. Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Amoruso. He's actually, he just called me. Mayor White.
Aye.
Three votes. Let me try to get back to Mr. Vice Mayor Amoruso.
We can go ahead and move forward, Keith.
Okay. So, public comment at a special meeting, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Under provisions of California Government Code, the city council is prohibited. From eternally discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature. Or an emergency need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Is there anyone, use the raise your hand feature? And help me out, City of Plymouth, whoever's operating that in. That would like to speak right now on matters on the agenda.
We don't have any members of the public on Zoom.
Okay. And City of Plymouth or Maria, is there any texts? Emails, comments that came in?
I didn't receive any. Yeah, I didn't receive any.
Same here.
Okay, I'm gonna go one more time around. Is there any members on Zoom that would like to speak on public comment on this matter? Okay, I know we're supposed to give this a certain amount of time.
No, no worries. When it's clear that there's no one on Zoom, you can move forward.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You're good.
Okay, okay, we're moving forward. The consent calendar and 5.1. Resolution 2021-14, making required findings authorizing the continuation of virtual meetings of the legislated bodies of the City of Plymouth. Councilmember Ackerman, questions, comments, concerns?
No questions, comments or concerns. Thank you.
Okay, question, our questions, comments, concerns, Councilmember Sims?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, is, is Peter online yet?
No.
No, he is not online.
Neither is Val.
Neither is Val. Okay, do I have a motion to pass the consent calendar as presented?
I'll make a motion to pass the motion as, as this on the, this consent.
Do we have a second on that?
I'm, I'm at a loss. Doug, do you want to rephrase that motion? You're, you're making a motion?
Yeah, to, to, to continue the Zoom that we are currently using.
You can just make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, I make a motion to, to. Calendar, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
Go ahead, Maria.
Sorry, I was trying to help Peter. Roll call vote. Councilmember Sim.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter still isn't on. Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Amoruso.
Aye.
There he is.
There he is.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes four with one absent.
Okay. I guess that's about as good as it can go or easy as it can go.
You are all good. That was the easiest meeting I've ever been to.
Oh Valerie.
Well, it's good to say hi.
I did really well in timing then, huh?
What's that?
The agenda and everything and I didn't see the change in time. So I was telling Ron, you gotta get out in the room because I have a meeting.
We had three Valerie, we're okay.
Okay, thank you guys.
I will say that Mr. Mayor, it was a well-run meeting and it looks on my screen, it looks like the Brady Bunch.
Oh, good deal. Okay, on that note, during this meeting, you guys all have a good evening and have a safe holiday season. Or we'll see, we'll see one more time before Christmas, but have a happy Thanksgiving. Bye guys.